Stephen ran home and he was gonna come back, but you definitely have a quorum if you want to start in the next couple of minutes.
You want to start in the next ten seconds? Fifteen seconds?
You just tell me. We just need to make sure Mark's recording.
Do we have to wait until seven, or can we go?
Yes.
I think we've got, and now, okay.
If the meeting was posted for seven, you have to wait till seven.
Seven o'clock it is. Let's call the order, the Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting for Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. In Colorado.
Ms. Austin?
Present.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Hubka?
Here.
Mr. Montiel?
Present.
And Mr. Ruttle Lopez is not back yet, so he's absent at the moment. Mr. Kaplan?
Here.
Mr. Martinez?
Present.
Mr. Renson?
Here.
And Chair Hagerty?
Here.
A quorum is present.
All right. Next agenda item is approval of the minutes. Are any changes added to discussions from last meeting's minutes? Hearing none. Go ahead and vote to approve the minutes.
I'm in approval.
In a second?
I second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? I didn't hear.
I did.
Oh, Aaron did. And who was the second?
Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
Do we need to vote for the minutes?
We're good. No discussion? We're good?
No, no, no.
Okay. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
And Mr. Kaplan?
Abstain.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
And Chair Hagerty?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We now have public forum. If anybody is here to discuss, nope. Okay, nobody else?
We don't have anyone online.
Okay. Well, then I think we can move on to the next agenda item, which is presentation by Mr. Roble for case two thousand and twenty-four dash oh-three, comprehensive plan update.
Looks, sounds like it works. All right. Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission members. This evening, we are, this is our, kind of our second major study session focusing on indicator data. So hopefully you have read the memo and looked at the chart to look at the different socioeconomic data points that we have collected and see how those have changed over the years. So I'm going to be pretty brief in this PowerPoint with the expectation that we're looking for discussion this evening. Hopefully that some of this information that has been presented to you, this, in the memo and in the maps and in the chart, some of it will have struck a nerve with you and maybe some ideas and some thoughts. And we'd love to hear those things. And so that, that's kind of gonna be the format of this evening's meeting. So just one thing on the agenda, review and discuss indicators. So obviously, you know that the comprehensive plan is divided into different sections. The traditional things that would be in a comp plan are typically employment and housing and, and shopping, parks and rec, and et cetera, et cetera. We, of course, refer to those things as live, work, shop, play, learn, and move. So first off, housing, we're gonna talk about housing first. I think that's kind of the biggie one that we have the most data on. So these are our live indicators, and the following is a summary of those. You know this, home values have increased faster than incomes by significant amounts. Single-unit homes are largely out of reach for our first-time home buyers. You know, it's really difficult to raise that kind of down payment. And can you really afford that mortgage when you have nine percent, seven to nine percent interest rates? Townhomes, we have two different kinds of townhome types of projects going on here in Inglewood. We have the, the types of infill townhomes where people go and take a small, older home and scrape it, and then subdivide that lot into two or three units. And there's quite a bit of a price tag that comes with that small property. And so the developers are building a product that's like from eight hundred thousand to over one million per unit. Now, we do also, there are attainable townhome developments that are being offered, but they typically have to, they're looking, basically those are, the only way they work is if they have a larger site and they can build a whole lot of those townhomes on that site. And something like that is like the Ironworks Village. And so you can get, you can get a place in Ironworks Village for quite a bit under eight hundred thousand. So that, that's kind of our attainable type of a development. And we have, some of that's going on in the medical district. It's also going on south of two eighty-five, south of here. And then we're hoping that we, there's some properties that are, larger properties up on the hill in Baker Park that where we have some developer interest, but they haven't, for whatever reason, they're busy with other projects elsewhere and they haven't come to fruition yet. Rising rents and low vacancy rates really indicate we need more development. The whole, the whole state does. New housing for very low-income populations are gonna, is gonna require subsidies, and I think our affordable housing task force has really, have really learned these types of lessons over the last year in that if England wants to put any kind of dent in affordable housing, they're gonna have to find some kind of financial sources to help subsidize these Conclusions, the city may continue to provide zoning capacity for housing development based on our updated provisions in Title sixteen. And we can also investigate potential opportunities to expand zoning capacity in either industrial areas or transitional areas. And transitional areas are those areas in our comprehensive plan, in the neighborhood assessments, where they're, they're kind of like between, typically there are these R-one or R-two areas that are kind of between a commercial area and then the rest of the neighborhood. And so they're kind of, they're kind of in that gray zone, and they are possibilities for looking at as, do we want to expand capacity in those areas? And you might increase density there in the zoning. We expect that multi-unit residential projects are going to continue in these following locations. I think these are no-brainers. You know, large apartment-style projects probably should continue to happen in the Inglewood Station and City Center District, also near Oxford Station, the South Broadway Main Street District downtown, the historical downtown area, the Wellness District, the remainder of the South Broadway Corridor, and there's probably a little bit of potential in some parts of federal Bellevue, such as maybe the bowling alley. We've had interest before in that large parking lot there. And then, you know, that maybe there's some other commercial areas that could be, you know, a lot of times in the metro, what we're seeing is people taking a strip mall area that has excessive parking and developing part of those areas for apartment buildings. So that's, that's another possibility. And then going back to the townhomes, so today, what we're, where we can, where we are allowing these townhomes to be built, these scrape and rebuild townhomes, infill townhomes, we, significantly, they are found in the northwest quadrant in the general Ironworks area. That whole area is zoned R-two and has been for, since the fifties. And so there's a lot of older homes there that are really old and all, not always in the great condition. And so that's where we've seen the most of that activity. But there's also some activity in the northeast quadrant, along, just east of Broadway, on Lincoln and Sherman Streets. And then also in the Wellness District, as you may know, over, kind of, between Hampton and two eighty-five, between Clarkson and Downing, there's been a lot of change over there as well. Although that's probably getting to a point where it's almost all played out, and there's probably not that many opportunities left. And then we have another, other possibilities for these large-site attainable townhome opportunities, maybe located in Baker Park, which is the hill, or south of Hampton, we've, as we've seen, a few projects are going up there. And also, we've kind of heard some scuttlebutt about Union Avenue down there by Centennial Park, that there's some industrial land there that's fairly undeveloped, and we've started, been hearing some developer interest about that area as well. And then for our R-one zone districts, we've, we've chosen to focus on those areas through gentle density. There also was some interest in some members of city council to introduce more affordable housing products in those areas, but they decided to hold off on that. But our original ideas in Code Next were really about gentle density, such as expanding accessory dwelling units to beyond R-one C into the R-one A and R-one B areas. We've also introduced the idea of the cottage home product, which would take a little bit of a larger lot and nestle, you know, three or four, five, six smaller homes on a site like that, that's kind of around a courtyard. And then the idea of the corner lot, bringing that idea back, that's something that has been historically, has occurred in Inglewood, particularly in the older areas. But the, that's the idea of just being able to lop off the back third of a lot and building a home that faces that east-west street. And then, then we, then the final area of housing that we also have an opportunity to look at is to analyze and investigate missing middle zoning development potential. And the zone districts that are probably what we would consider to be missing middle zones are the M U R three zone districts, as well as the R-two zone districts. And with that summary conclusion, I'm ready to bring it open to the Planning and Zoning Commission members to get their, any other thoughts and your discussions on these indicators and these potential strategies.
So just to confirm for tonight, we'll go through each one of the indicators and kind of discuss each one. Is that your intention? Or is this just live tonight?
So I guess my, my point of attack was that I was, I was expecting that you have looked over the information, the, the chart, and read the memo. And so I've decided to not necessarily go into and, and talk about those actual numbers, but more of the trends that I pulled out of there from that, that information, and what our strategies might be going forward, and keep it kind of a higher level like that.
Okay. Great. Any thoughts, questions?
I got one.
Cool, yeah.
Curious if you guys have discussed ideas that get at the issue of keeping people in their houses. You know, we talked a lot about home sizes and family sizes in Inglewood, not necessarily aligning, which is why people often move. I know one of the charts in the other room pointed out, you know, encouraging, basically expanding your own home. And I'm curious on what are the ideas associated with that? How to enable people to invest in their own property? Because not everybody has three hundred grand to put into an A D U. And, but they might have seventy-five or a hundred to add on a bedroom at the back, for example. Are there approaches that the city's thinking about as ways to encourage or help people stay in their own property rather than letting everything be sold to developers, scraped and crammed in tighter?
That's very good. And so that has historically been a significant strategy for the city, going back to probably even nineteen seventy-nine. And that, you know, home expansions were something that a lot of our lower-income or even working-income folks might needed help with, some assistance back then, because interest rates were really high. And we have, the city historically has a housing fund, rehab fund, that would make loans to people like that to do those things. That, that was the primary way the city would assist, because the city could, through those primes, give them a much lower interest rates than the market interest rate at that time. And then I would say, and, and this is based on my experience, I worked for the city over twenty years, and, and then two thousand and eight came along and the economy crashed and so did the housing market, and interest rates just fell to nothing. And then it was like our programs really didn't work much very well anymore, because interest rates were so low on the market that people just didn't really need our program anymore. We also did a lot of, at that time, a lot of rehabilitation ourselves at the city, because there were so many foreclosed-on houses that the city weren't able to take over and use these stimulus N S P, I can't remember what N S P standard for, but they were, you know, government, federal government funds that we helped us to purchase and to rehab and then to flip these foreclosed homes. And, and then, of course, Inglewood has such, has always historically had very small homes. And you're right, that that really becomes an issue, especially as the family grows. And there's always been, the people have acknowledged this for quite a while, and they're always wanting to see if we could encourage home expansion so that families could stay here. And I think some of that is, that, some of that has happened over the years. But I have to say, it, a lot of times, for most people, it's, it's just a lot easier to sell your home and, and buy a bigger home. And so I think those are still something that will always be pertinent to Inglewood. Are there any really barriers to it? I, I'm not sure. There are probably, one of the things that I have seen before that I've always thought would be an interesting strategy in Inglewood would, is that some suburbs have actually developed these patterned, patterned books about, and they, they identify certain types of styles of homes and properties, and then kind of show you, and maybe even develop, give us a kind of a generic set of architectural plans to how to, to make a really nice expansion on a certain style of home. I've seen that done before. So that could, that could be something that could, might help some people. So I'm sure that we will continue with those things. But at, at this time, really what we use our housing fund for is more, it's more targeted as like energy efficiency programs right now. Do I hope that answered your question?
Real quick, Aaron, before you go, so we do have, we currently still have that housing fund?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Interesting, okay. Aaron?
Yeah, along those same lines, really about this idea of preventing or reducing displacement, in looking through the numbers, you know, from the baseline years, we've seen, what was it, housing values like sixty-eight percent increase, rents sixty-something increase, but then income, the number was eighty-something percent. And so just looking at the numbers, it says, okay, things are keeping up. But the reality is, is that people are being forced out and they're being replaced by higher-income people. It's the cycle. It's the cycle of gentrification. It's a cycle of displacement. I'm wondering if there is some metrics of that churn or that displacement, or something to add some color to that story, other than, because when you say incomes are keeping up, aren't keeping up with the rising costs in house, well, that's not the, not what the numbers say.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I think that there's some, some interesting detail, I think, to be pulled out of that.
Okay. Yeah, that's really good. So yes, there has been a lot of change in Inglewood. And during that great recession period, so I remember, I was working here and it was like, wow, I think I'm gonna be here for a long time, because I don't think there's gonna be any other opportunities to go anywhere else. And so it was like, you know what, I might as well, it's time to take advantage of this and buy a house. And I decide I wanted to live in Inglewood. I wanted to, you know, why wouldn't I want to work, live in my city that I was working for and have a very short commute? And so what I did is I rode my bicycle up and down every street in Inglewood, and I wrote down the address of every home that was for sale. And there was, on every block, there was at least two houses on this side and two houses on that side that were for sale, on every block in the city. Yes. And I had a big list of homes. And, yeah, and so I, I think a few years after that, I kind of looked into, you know, how many homes had, had changed hands during that time period? And it was a, it was a huge amount of, I, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was a very large percentage that, of homes that, that were, that changed hands during that time. And so that was the beginning of a significant change in the Inglewood's population. And we have a much more diverse population today. There's a lot more professionals living in the city. And those are the, are the kind of the people that are bringing Inglewood's incomes numbers up. But we know that people of more traditional, blue-collar, working-class professions that don't require college educations, those wages are not keeping up. And so, yeah, you're kind of right, that, yeah, Inglewood has changed a bit, and there's a lot of people where I think the council is hearing from a lot of constituents that, that have sons and daughters, they're young, who would like to live here again, when, you know, this is where I grew up. And they're hearing that that's, there's not really an opportunity for that. And, and so that's what's driving a lot of this affordable housing conversations.
Aaron, I might also add that part of the very robust group of laws that the state passed, the Department of Local Affairs and some of the other state organizations, will be working on a series of displacement strategies that cities can then implement out of those strategies. So there are things on the, on the, on the horizon, we're just not quite there yet.
I, I just see that this is gonna, this can be a key topic or strategic focus area, you know, for the city. You know, we can, we can continue to grow and get more dense and all of these things that are needed, but, you know, if, if we're not mindful of the people we're displacing and how to not displace them, then I think we're, you know, that's not an outcome we want.
Michelle?
Yes, and I really liked your maps that started a little bit further down, I think, and I really liked the one on page thirteen. I'd like to talk about that a little bit, because it looks like a lot of projects, multifamily projects have been completed. And if you look at, what is it, page thirteen? Yeah, so you can see all the green and yellow and blue, and those are all basically done. And there's only a couple dots that are red, which are current projects. Is that, do you think, just because of there's a little bit of interest rate problems and things like that, that have slowed down the construction of multifamily?
When you, when you look at the units and how, how many units were, came online for each year, there does seem to be sort of a cycle to it. And so it, there seems to be a kind of a ramp up for a couple years, and then, then it goes back down. And I think that's because the market is taking its time to absorb those new apartments. And then as they are filled up and you get to ninety-five, ninety-six percent occupancy, then, then the developers come around again and they're ready to build some more. And, and so I think when you look at those numbers, they're kind of like this, and then back up, and then like that. And so, and you're right, we have, it's been kind of a slowdown here recently with, we've had a lot of inflation, and then the Federal Reserve has countered, tried to counter that with, and we have a much different interest rate environment now than we did just a few years ago. And, yeah, so there's a lot of people that are kind of sitting on the sidelines, waiting for that to come back down a bit. It should, it should eventually do so. As time goes on, inflation is brought to heel, the Federal Reserve will continue to make their decreases in their prime rate, and those interest rates will probably tick down. I do not expect them, this is my personal opinion, but I don't think we're going to see three, three and a half percent for another generation. Hopefully not. I don't think that's actually productive. I think, though, I think, you know, a target that we'll, we'll eventually see is probably five to six percent, which is more historical.
And we're getting very close to that in some, but the Fed is being a little reluctant to lower rates very much, you know, just a quarter at a time and that sort of thing. But have other cities seen a slowdown as well? Because we're, the reality is, we're, we're competing for people and, and developers. I mean, you know, in some respects, they could do something in Inglewood if they find the right site, or they could go to Littleton, or they could go to Sheridan, or, so are the other cities around seeing a little bit of a slowdown as well?
That's a really good question. And I couldn't really necessarily say, only by anecdotal, my, just my eyes, but I would believe so, that I, I don't think I see as many projects, but that's something that I should probably look into, is.
Well, just give them a call, that's all.
That, that might be helpful for you guys, too. And so I'm taking notes upon your different observations and thinking about how I can bring back more data for you.
Okay. Yeah, I don't need a.
And another thing that may be affecting some of this timing, again, goes back to those state laws that are gonna have pretty drastic effects on a lot of communities. On us, you know, the, the one about transit-oriented communities likely won't have that big of a change, because Code Next was able to achieve so much of that, where other communities are gonna be looking at very large, sometimes very sweeping changes in and around their transit corridors. So I think some of that may be causing kind of a, a sit-and-wait strategy from the development community of saying, we'll wait to see what communities do. At least, in my experience, when you talk to developers, they choose, they tend to want to go the path of least resistance. So one where they don't have to go to a lot of public hearings, you know, they want to be able to get to a permit. And this kind of gives a direction towards, to getting towards those permits. So I think that may be another item where people are, the development community is kind of pausing and just waiting to see how everything plays out in all the different communities in our metro area.
Well, and we're, we were, Inglewood, by the passing of Code Next is like at least six months ahead of most other communities, because that, we had, we passed Code Next before they passed all that stuff at the state level. So we should, or theoretically, be able to get a little bit of a jumpstart from other communities.
We, we have a pretty big head start.
Yeah. So, and just anecdotally, I do see more homes for sale. I see more signs up around, just around. So I think that people are finally just putting, they're just realizing that interest rates are not gonna drop, and they're just, go ahead and put it on the market and that sort of thing, because it seems that interest rates are not, they're a little sticky there. They're not, they're not falling down. And the other thing I think that's going on, too, is, and I think you mentioned it in your notes, is that although, well, that a lot of people are still driving in their car. And the other thing I think that's going on too is, and I think you mentioned it in your notes, is that although, well, that a lot of people are still driving in their car by themselves. You said that transit's up a little bit, but then you also said that, uh, single occupant cars are going up because they're driving around more for just their errands and things like that. So that may be sticking on the transit development too, that people don't seem to be after the, all the COVID and everything like that. And just the security of riding transfer, that people are not going back to it as, as readily as they might have been if all that didn't happen. So just anecdotally comments.
Victoria?
So obviously we'll do more research into this data for our surrounding municipalities. But for the last year, Denver's multifamily apartment permits have been down by fifty percent. So there certainly is a factor of new state laws, supply chain issues, market constraints that are impacting this development.
Thank you.
Not surprising.
Eric, and then Brenda.
So if we look at page fourteen of the handout, it's the accessory dwelling unit projects from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. There's only been thirteen ADUs that have been, uh, built. ADUs have been allowed in Inglewood since the beginning of two thousand nineteen. Title sixteen changed a lot of the laws to make it easier, a lot of the ordinances to make it easier to build ADUs. One, not having a, a parking requirement. Number two, not having to, uh, live in the primary or the accessory unit. If we look at House Bill eleven fifty-two, which passed in May and goes into effect July thirtieth of next year, twenty twenty-five, there are, there's grants available and there's other, um, uh, increase accessory dwelling unit fee reduction encouragement grant program within the division. The purpose of this grant program is for the division to provide grants to supportive jurisdictions for offsetting costs incurred in connection with developing pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans. Has the city thought about coming up with any pre-approved accessory dwelling unit plans in order to expedite the, the building and the permitting process of those? And in order to, to get some funds from the state in order to, uh, help facilitate that?
I, since this, uh, just passed, uh, this, I believe this earlier this year. So no, we have not developed any plans like that. But I, I'm going to pass it over to Brian because he was the person who stayed this particular legislation the most closely. What do you think?
Sure, so as, as staff, no. We take our direction from council on all of these. So if anybody, uh, or for all of you, on, I think, November twelfth, we presented the first four laws to council. We took some direction. I don't remember specifically what all direction we have on each one, but we can get it to you. And then on December ninth, we'll present the last two housing-related and then one landscape-related laws to council. So, um, I, I, I want to say there was some discussion about that item. I couldn't recall, I see Aaron shaking his head, I know he was there that night. I, I want to say that there was some discussion about pre-approved plans. I know we had one item that we had mentioned about we need, we would need to adjust in the code that we had kind, kind of heard, yes, go ahead and adjust that item, bring that back. And then one item that, um, isn't an issue as, as it regards to the state law, but has caused some consternation from people trying to build ADUs, that we would look at changing that as well. But I think that the pre-approved plans might have been one. To be honest, if we submitted our report to the state tomorrow, we probably only have one thing that we have to change to get our ADU regulations in line with that state law.
I think that's a commendation to the team that we had on, all of you, and, and we appreciate the efforts there. Uh, Brenda?
Oh, yeah, so here's my question. We're looking at the single-family housing stock and we're not, how many of those are rentals? And, and here's a big thing when we talk about Inglewood, is that we're not talking about fifty percent of them are rentals. And we don't know how many of them are owned by, say, um, somebody out of state, somebody who owns a number of rentals. We don't know how many, um, are, are ever going to be, um, have a chance of ever having, um, another, how do I put it? Are non-owner occupied? Do we know how many homes in the single-family lot are non-owner occupied? And doesn't that factor into our ability to keep costs down? And can we find that information?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Yeah, it's on the chart.
It is on the chart?
So, yeah, so, and I'll explain that to you, how we do that. So under, under homeownership rate, single family, so we, we, uh, take our, uh, land use, uh, parcels in GIS and we identify, we have, you know, we have these things broken out into the, whatever class they're, uh, identified as. And so we can select all the single-family homes. And then we, we compare their CITUS address, which is the house, address of the house, to the address of the property tax bill, the owner. Owners, here's their mailing address. And if they're different, they don't add up to zero. And, and so when that happens, we, we assume that that is a rental. That there's, that the person owns it, they're a landlord and they're living at, where they're getting that, uh, property tax bill. And that's how we determine that, our estimate of what that rate is. And so for our single-family housing stock, uh, right now, uh, we, we estimate that seventy-nine point six percent is owner occupied.
Seventy-nine point six percent is, yeah, I got you. Seventy-nine point six percent is owner occupied of all single-family homes, but that's since fifty percent.
So, so we have, uh, on this chart, we have homeownership rate for all units. And then, then we have homeownership rate, single family below that. And so for all units, that includes not only single-family homes, but also all the apartments that there are as well. Everything, uh, apartments, condos, uh, townhomes, it's the whole universe. And when you add all those, you know, those are mostly rentals, apartment units. And so that brings overall, the rate is only forty-nine percent.
And we know how much those, that, the, the cost of renting those homes is in this data. Do we know that?
The single family or the rental?
The single family.
Okay.
Cause that might be.
I don't believe so. I think that the, so we get the, the, uh, multifamily rental, uh, data from CoStar. And so I do not believe CoStar has that data. They have, what they're, what those numbers are showing you is what apartment complexes will rent for one bedrooms and two bedrooms. And we really don't have, yeah, when you, when you, if you were to, rents for a single-family home is going to be exponentially more than what those rental rates that you're seeing in this chart say. Yeah, they're, they're, they're going to be well north of two thousand dollars a month.
Mm-hmm. That's all I wanted to know. I'd like to know what Inglewood could do about that.
Yes, that's something that I think has always been a concern since I've been here is, is, uh, there's a desire to up our ownership rates.
And then how many of them are, you know, investment companies or from out of state and, and all that? I mean, I know there's plenty of people who just inherit their property and stuff, but, um.
You know, uh, that's, that's been brought up before about this idea that there, there's, there's corporations that are buying up homes. And you've seen articles about that. They're generally not necessarily local, they're more about the national housing scene. I have kind of looked into that and, um, if they are owned by corporations, they're sure really good at disguising it because there's, you know, there's, these are, when I'm identifying these homes that have addresses, mailing addresses somewhere else, they're, they're names of people, they're not corporate names. And so I don't think that's really the case here in Inglewood.
I think there are a lot of newer neighborhoods or maybe more, it's not established neighborhoods, just, you know, brand new neighborhoods that they're buying large chunks of, but Aaron, did you have enough?
Any LLC can have a registered agent as a human being's name, that's a lawyer in some office. Anyway, um, was, was there anybody else calling or Carl?
Yeah, Carl had before you, so then we can go back.
So you were talking about affordable housing and subsidized, uh, funding forum. I mean, it's, I haven't heard a whole lot about just sizing down houses and modular houses. Modular houses, I mean, you can be a big house, but it's still pretty cheap. And I haven't heard a whole lot about that, if they're considering that.
Did we add, I think, some of that into, uh, Title sixteen?
Yes, we don't, we don't prohibit modular housing at all. We look at it from a planning standpoint as a house. So as long as you can meet all your setbacks, your book plane, everything else, um, it's allowed through zoning. There, I, I think it goes to a little bit of a different, um, review and inspection process on the building side. But we definitely don't prohibit any of that. So it's allowed. It may not, our code doesn't necessarily give express allow, you know, very permissive allowances that says, yes, it's allowed. But it's allowed, just like a stick-built home. So we don't do anything to prohibit it, uh, other than we just review it a little bit differently, just because the way it's built.
There's a, a lot of industrial areas that have been empty for years. And just take those industrial areas and make a little modular city down there. Where, wherever, that's, a lot of that's off south, I think, but, um.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, but you also bring up, you know, the, the smaller homes. We have a good stock of what would be considered affordable homes. How do we also continue to protect that, you know, the stock of houses that might be affordable to some first-time homebuyers that aren't going to get picked up by developers? And I don't know exactly the way that you would do that, but like, are there any thoughts or?
Well, yes, uh, so, uh, as I, one of these, I think, let me go back to the previous slide. So we have had, as you saw in the maps, we've had a lot of townhome, these, a lot of these infill townhome developments. But they're fairly limited in the areas where they occur. Primarily, they really occur mostly in the, at northwest quadrant, some in the northeast. And we have seen a few trickle down to Akoma and Lincoln down south. But that's really, there's a very rarely, a fairly small area. We don't have huge amounts of R-two and R-three zones. And that might be, and, you know, this is, this is one thing that you're going to have to, um, determine if that's, if this is the right policy for Inglewood? Or do you think that we, these are, this areas aren't sufficient for, and you want, and you think we need to, um, open up other areas of the city for this type of development? And so that, that's a question for the Planning and Zoning Commission to make a recommendation to council. Or you may decide that, that, um, no, this is, this is the appropriate thing for Inglewood. Because we, because if you open this up to other areas that are now R-one, now you're putting more, a lot of pressure on those neighborhoods where people will, where developers will see, take a small, a smaller, older home that was previously, you couldn't subdivide that, but now they can. And you, and so now there's all these more pressures on these more, um, naturally occurring affordable housing, uh, single families that you have in the city. And so that's the balance that, that has to be achieved, is, do we have the correct balance today? I'm, I'm sure that we've, we've heard from a lot of people that feel this has gone, this has gone too far, what we have today. They've said that, you know, they've lamented the, a lot of these scraping activities and building these townhomes. And that's a valid opinion. There probably be others that say, no, we need more of this to happen. I know that other people have a different idea and want, you know, to attract more investment and more units. And, and some of them might even say, we, we, we want to continue to invite more higher-income people. That's another opinion, but you guys are going to have to strike the balance. Is this the right balance or, or should there be expansion? I, I'm not sure if we can really, I wouldn't really advise contracting because that, that can lead to a lot of can of worms. Because, you know, you've already allowed these things to happen and now you're, uh, that's the downzoning word.
Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple of things real quick.
Could I go back onto that one then, real quick? Just one quick follow-up and then we'll go, and I don't know if it's something you'll be able to answer today, but it was a question I've had for a while, is what is the correct balance of residential tax base versus commercial? We're losing, you know, some of these industrial, commercial areas. People are like, well, the tax base on that is much higher, but at a different valuation versus residential. Do we feel like that balance is right? And maybe that's just something that we can all think about, um, and get some numbers for, unless. If anybody knew the answer to that, they'd be the number one person in every city. I, I think it depends on who you listen to. You know, the commercial side, we've had some articles come out about new businesses moving to our community. And the commercial side says, we need more residential, we need more people here to make these businesses work. That's what we generally hear. But again, there's, there's no right answer for, you know, no, no blanket right answer. Every community is different. Places like this are even more complicated because we can only affect what happens in Inglewood, but every one of you has the ability to go wherever you want in the metro area to spend your dollars. So it, it, it's not a, we don't have a good answer for that. I wish we did. We, you know, we'd have job offers and people coming after us all over the place if we knew that answer. Unfortunately, I don't know if anybody really does.
Thanks, Brian. Aaron, and then I'll go back to you, Michelle.
First, Brian, can you send those recommendations or the, what council had requested, um, for the, um, state legislative impacts? You know, from the study session, you had mentioned you could send us what, um, council had requested of staff?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Second thing, um, get, I, I agree with a lot of the conversation here that corporate ownership, real estate investment trusts, you know, venture capital, um, owning mass portfolios of single-family homes is tantamount to strip mining, uh, extractive, you know, strip mining of the value of our community. So just, it's one, yeah, just wanted to put that out there that it scares the hell out of me. But I, back to the, um, to the memo, um, there was something I wanted to ask about the office and industrial real estate market. There wasn't any mention in there about something that's a very, um, uh, hot topic now around adaptive reuse, office-to-residential conversions. They hardly ever work, it has to be the very right circumstance and they, um, and they're typically very expensive. But just wondering if there's an opportunity for some comment there of, or some analysis of, are there any buildings? And in fact, I think there probably are a couple of buildings around City Center that might kind of fit that, um, that typology that would make sense for conversions. But just wondering if there's any, if you could address that in any way, um, you know, this recent trend of looking at converting office space to residential.
Yeah, um, so you're, yeah, you're correct in the fact that many office buildings do have floor plates that are very conducive to, um, repositioning as residential. I, what I've, I've, I've went to some, uh, state planning conferences and, and what I learned from that was that typically really older buildings are much better candidates. They are more, more akin to the sizes that you would, and how deep they are and whatnot. So I'm, and I, these are like, you know, LODO-type buildings, you know, from the, you know, late eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds that they're really, they were emphasizing and the modern buildings tend not to. In terms of office buildings here in Inglewood, I've wondered about sometimes smaller office buildings on Broadway that look like, well, I think you could probably turn that into apartments. But we haven't seen any really, anybody do that yet. But we have, but I will say that, um, in terms of reuse, uh, what has, we have seen is the. uh, what has, we have seen is that in downtown, you know, historical downtown Broadway, there are some larger retail spaces that were historically either like grocery stores or department stores, a long time ago. And they're very large and then, and then they transitioned later on as tho, as those department stores found malls. Uh, they transitioned typically into furniture stores. But even that has changed. Now you can, you know, you can order lots of furniture on Amazon and Wayfair. And so even though mom and pop furniture stores are, have gone away. And so these spaces are just very large and not very conducive to any type of retail that we have today. And so, uh, a couple, some of these buildings in downtown have been, uh, people have seen that opportunity and decided, I don't want to pay, uh, thirty dollars a foot and I want to own my own building. And, uh, so we have, uh, I think, three different buildings that were in, on Broadway that are now, have been turned into professional offices. So that, that trend is happening.
Michelle?
Just a quick comment on, on what you're to talk, with the topic right now is that it, part of the problem with making these office buildings into residential is, is the plumbing. Um, because generally there's one set of, or two sets of bathrooms and unless you want to live like in a dormitory, which I, there is one building in downtown Denver that is going to be like that. It's going to, um, you're going to be able to, I think it's a rental property and you agree that you'll be sharing bathroom facilities or something like that. So it's like, you know, it's like going to college again. So, you know, that's, that's how it is. Um, but I, I think that we're in a funny place right now, uh, in the real estate market where everything's a little bit at a lull and trying to figure out which way things are going to go. Is it, is the trend toward working at home going to stay? Um, and that's going to impact the office market as well as the industrial market. And, and we're, I didn't realize that eleven fifty-two, House Bill eleven fifty-two didn't go into effect until June of next year. I, most bills go into effect in July of the current, of the year that they're passed. But that means that we're way ahead with, with our passage of Code Next. I mean, we're like a year and a half ahead of, of that curve. And so it takes time for the market to adjust and to figure things out, but we're way ahead. And so we, like I said earlier, we may be the ones that see more successes down the road. But I just think right now with changing Code Next and as well as eleven fifty-two, I, I'm reluctant to make a lot of changes because I just think we need to see how everything pans out first before we make large changes to what we've already passed. That's kind of just my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree, um, that I, I like where we are with R one, I would just kind of hold. Uh, aside from what the state has done. Um, and let me just make an offhand remark about, uh, outside ownership. And that is, we don't know what we don't know. And I, I have a friend who writes to community development quite often about his research about owner-occupied short-term rentals. He's out, we did pass an ordinance that has a lot of teeth, but we don't have real good policing of it. And we are still finding people, um, at least two, that he's probably shared with me, that live out of state and are short-term renting their single-family home. My solution would be an ordinance, and we're not going to take that up tonight. But we would know more about the state of our rental community is if all the owners had to register with the city. And that would help us a lot. Then we would know what their address is and where they're paying their taxes. Um, and if a, a neighbor, you know, had a problem with the tenants or something, they'd, code enforcement would have a quicker avenue. But just saying that they're just an individual, yeah, it's kind of like it could be a registered agent, it could be. And, and, and they do hide behind names. They also hide their addresses because we have short-term rentals where they get the tax bill at that residence, but they live in California. So, um, we don't know what we don't know. And I, that is one area that we haven't tackled that we could tackle. Thank you, that is all.
I have a quick question about that. Is it, is the limit only for out-of-state owners that you can't have a short-term rental, but you could be an in-state owner and have a short-term rental?
You have to occupy it fifty percent of the time, isn't that right? You have to live there so part of the time.
That's what I thought, I had heard it that that rule went away, is that not the case?
Not the case, they have to live there part-time. The only thing is, the city can't necessarily prove it. You have to, we have a third-party company that is supposed to be watching these and you can tell by how often somebody's renting it. You have to look at the whole, and they're not doing a great job.
Fair, so I mean, that, that seems like a slightly smaller scale concern than what Aaron had been talking about of like commercial businesses owning houses. Is there anything that the city could, yeah, I mean, I'm not disagreeing, that's an issue. I'm just wondering, is there something that the city could do to prohibit corporations from buying up houses? Is that like a thing that you can do legally to prevent them from?
No, but we would at least have the data. And then maybe we could provide an incentive for people to live in the home. Or maybe we could tax people who live out of state. We can't tell anybody they can't buy a home, can't do that in America, but.
Well, not a person, but a corporation.
Yeah, corporation is a person.
Right, but is there, there's no way around that to avoid that becoming an issue? Because it may not be an issue today, but thirty years from now, you know, what if all your neighbors are owned by XYZ Corp, right?
Exactly, we don't know what we don't know.
Do you have a different tax, is it, not necessarily a lot of state, but is it, are you taxed differently if you have a residential home that's not your primary address or something like that, is what you're, I think, alluding to. So, good conversation, I think, Brian, did you have something you were going to add?
Yeah, so in March of twenty-three, John actually responded to a council request, um, kind of asking a very similar question about how many people own, like, do property owners own multiple properties or are there these large swaths? We can send that request to you. It doesn't identify the actual property owners, it just gives everybody kind of a tag, like, number three owns two lots, number forty-five owns. Uh, but there were, there was a council request that John worked on. So he, he has worked on this specific item, you know, at the request of council before, we can send you that request. Um, one thing I will also say is, um, every time we update our rules and anything that we do from a planning standpoint, people find ways around them. I mean, that's just what people do. So, you know, we generally, rules pass and then we have to start trying to figure out how to, how to figure out how they're finding a way around the rules that we have. So, you know, we pass something new and then we play catch-up for a little bit until we figure out what's going on. It, I've done this in three cities and two states, same thing everywhere. We pass a new rule and then they, someone figures out a way around the rule. And then we have to figure out, how do we stop that? How do we stop this? Um, what I will say, John has about ten more slides to get through. So I don't, I don't want to stifle the conversation, but I do want to make sure that he gets through the slides that he's presenting you so that we can make sure we get through everything tonight.
Yeah, the, and I, I apologize, I thought you were saying that was the end, John. So, um, yeah, we pass rules and then we don't pay for enforcement of it. Um, quick click, or? Did you, okay, all right, hit it, move it on.
Okay. Well, let's work, let's, we, I think we've already started to start talking about this one. Uh, work indicators, that's, uh, business and employment. Uh, some of, the summary of our indicators are that the medical sector employment is consistently growing over time. That's, that's our number one sector. And that's, uh, that's our primary employers really is, is their number one. And number two is Swedish and Craig. And that is consistent, have been consistently growing over time. Uh, you can see it with your own eyes as they have, have one expansion after another. Employment in most of our other sectors, uh, will likely remain stable, but will probably not grow, uh, much. Uh, there's probably not a, we have, um, we have some office properties, we probably will not see new office development in the city. There's really too much office development in the whole metro. And people are working more, working from home, they're using shared spaces. Um, and, uh, and then, so there's this, there's just a lot less demand and a lot more space than, than, uh, you know, I'll just, just use example, there's a office property at, uh, two A five in Wadsworth that's been turned into a storage facility. And so, you know, that's, that's the way it is. And so we're not going to see a lot of new office development in the city. Um, there's a potential for property purchase and conversion to offices for small professional service firms. We are seeing that trend, as I did talk about that downtown. Uh, and there's a lot of small business startups, we're seeing a lot more small, we, we, uh, year after year, we're seeing more and more businesses in Inglewood, but they're very, but they're being started by individuals. Uh, so we are seeing business growth, but they're just small, very small businesses that are typically running out of their home. Uh, so some of our conclusions, what, what can we do about that? We can investigate future expansion needs of hospitals and facilitate those expansions through master planning opportunities. So we, uh, back in, uh, between two thousand and seven and two thousand and twelve, we did our small area planning for the hospital, the wellness district, and we did some major rezonings there. And that has spurred a lot of, uh, good, positive change. Um, but also we have heard some, some things from our discussions with the hospitals recently, uh, particularly Craig. Craig, uh, has, you know, based on where Craig's, uh, hospitals are at kind of the corner of Gerard and, um, Clarkson, um, they really are interested in going north. And there's some opportunities for them to go north, but there's also some things in our zoning that we intentionally put in there to limit the impact to the neighborhood. And so that was, that's something that, you know, can be discussed. Uh, and there's in, uh, room to investigate potential opportunities for more office conversions of other retail properties in Inglewood. And with that, uh, are there any other thoughts from the commission? And I would invite discussion at this point.
John, how about we just go through the rest of the slides and we'll let the conversation happen at the end? Because it seems like they've already started talking about some of these other items that you have further on in your slides.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, yeah, okay, we'll, we'll just go through them all and then we can have a conversation about it all. Um, so then the shop indicators, uh, this is our retail businesses. So, um, some of the trends that we are seeing is that major chain retail demand is, is permanently shrinking. I mean, lots of places like, um, Bed Bath Beyond, there's nowhere Bed Bath Beyond except for, you know, retail, our online presence. And, uh, and, uh, Amazon is, is, uh, has significantly expanded their, uh, how their percent, their take of the overall market. And, and so people are opting for more of this convenience of shipping and whatnot. And, and so lots of, uh, there's a lot of pressure on many of our retail places to convert. Uh, and then we have a competitor over in Sheridan called Riverpoint, and they have some competitive advantages over our, our regional shopping center locations as well. Uh, they have a lot more land to deal with, a lot of these chains want lots of parking that we can't come near providing. Um, and there's just a lot of synergies over there that there's a, it's just a bigger place with more stuff and, and people are attracted to that. And so it's, it's really, it was, it's going to be really hard for us to compete for those, any new retail because of Riverpoint. Uh, past days have indicated that Inglewood has an abundance of retail space. We have, they have basically said that we are over-retailed. Uh, and we have, and some of our retail space is just also become challenging to lease. It's really old, um, or small, and, um, it's just not that attractive to a lot of people, a lot of businesses. But, uh, the city is very fortunate, however, to offer a number of grocery store options. We are not a food desert, we have really good opportunities. We have, um, you know, Safeway, Kings, we have King Supers, three different King Supers in the, in the city. We have Safeway downtown, uh, down south, now we have, uh, Sprouts. And, and then even on our edges in other cities, there are opportunities, there, there's a Walmart and King Supers up for the Hill on Evans, uh, and Federal, uh, and there's just south in Littleton as well, there's a King Supers. So we have good grocery store opportunity, uh, options here in Inglewood. So what are some of the strategies that we could do? Uh, we could investigate potential opportunities for retail conversions. Um, redevelopment along Broadway corridor may attract new investment in commercial space. So if we do, if we are successful in getting new housing developments, that might spur more people to want to rehabilitate an older, uh, commercial property and put a new business in there. We have seen those happen over, over time. Uh, we could encourage and foster more retail development in the wellness district to serve residents and district visitors and employees. We have lost a number of different businesses, old-time businesses in the wellness district that's kind of served that area uh, and have been slower to develop some of the newer businesses. We have some newer businesses there, but, but, uh, I've always wanted to see more businesses there. And I'm probably guessing other people do too. So, uh, I'm going to move on, we're not going to start discussion there, but we're going to talk about move indicators. Uh, the city has significant potential for walkability and bikeability due to our established grid street system. The city is providing bike lanes and share markings, maybe not fast as we'd like, but we are doing that. And we do have a walking wheel budget that the city council has, uh, instituted. Uh, so we should have some money every year to do some of these projects. Uh, based on recent ridership trends, the RTD system, regional transit system needs to be reassessed. And I think RTD is doing that and so are we, actually. And, and the county is also, uh, we're going to be part of a county-wide study that, uh, should start hopefully next year. Uh, that will look at micro-mobility and, uh, different, uh, different options like that. Uh, and based on that, we know that we do not have a shared bicycle scooter services at this time and that will be part of that study. It's very difficult to improve our walk scores through infrastructure improvements alone. What you, to improve walk scores, you really need more things, you need more businesses you need to walk to. You're, 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 just by putting new bike lanes or wider sidewalks, that won't really improve your walk score. So what can we do about, uh, move indicators? The city is currently fi, we're currently finalizing our plans for Old Hampton, which is great. So that's going to, that's a really, that'll be a big achievement. We're also currently developing design plans for the rail trail corridor. Uh, city is also planning for improvements along Broadway, south of Hampton. And the city and, and the Downtown Development Authority have recently conducted planning exercises for Little Dry Creek Trail and Inglewood Parkway. And there's a potential to expedite planning implementation of north-south walking wheel projects. So I think the city really is moving forward, full speed ahead with these types of projects. And it just takes time, uh, because there's a lot of design time in it and they are, it is money. Uh, so, but the city is, is finally, um, after many years, not doing these types of things. The city is doing these things. Uh, and learn indicators, um, as the city continues to attract younger, highly educated residents, the affordability challenges for many demographic groups are increasing and other cities in the region share in this trend. Uh, and consumers are becoming more aware of their water use and are making efforts to use water more efficiently. That's what we concluded from those indicators. Uh, other conclusions are that we can explore the development of additional workforce and attainable housing to retain opportunities for all demographic groups to live in the community. And the city's sustainability programs have been successful in creating awareness of conservation opportunities. And we do have, um, a sustainability commission that was once, uh, keeping it beautiful. And, uh, we do have a sustainability coordinator and they're, they're working hard on a lot of different fronts. So we're doing well there. Uh, and finally, I think this is the last one, play indicators. Uh, park levels of service has remained stable over the last ten years. Uh, park level of service is a challenging indicator to improve upon due to the lack of opportunity to acquire new park space in a built-out city. And our residential development is improving in the half-mile access percentage, but not the quarter mile, which is kind of interesting. And I think that is just kind of a fluke, but we'll may have to look at that a little closer. Uh, the Parks Department will facilitate new parks improvements via the recent bond measure, so that's exciting. Um, we need to identify other opportunities in our comprehensive plan update. And that's all I had about that. And that's all I had about that. And that's the end of the show. So, so now we have, it is eight oh nine. So I think we have about forty or so minutes to talk about any of those topics.
I think we can probably keep it more succinct than that, but let's get started. Hold on, Carl, go ahead.
Forgot which one I was going to talk about. Going, going way back, the, in the tables that you had, the two thousand apartments were added in the last nine, 10 years, and the rent went up fifty-some percent. So all I hear is, mostly from Denver, that you got to build more to bring the rent down. Well, those charts don't show that whatsoever.
That's a very interesting observation. So, well, I would say personally that no, rent, is rent going to now all of a sudden drop from fifteen hundred dollars to a thousand? No, no, that's not going to happen. But what we could do, if we get enough units built, is to stop the, these steep increases and get it so that, you know, it's increasing like two or three percent a year. That's what you're really trying to shoot for.
Another thing is the, the retail, you say they're, they're going away from retail? As in, what I'm thinking of retail is the retail on the bottom floor of an apartment building. Is that going to be, tried to avoid that? Or is there, is there, there's, is there anywhere in Inglewood that that actually works? Inglewood Parkway, it does not work. So is there a place where it does work?
Well, I would, I guess I would point to the Broadway lofts, where that has been successful. And, and it's a better location, it's where other businesses are. And so that's why I think it has worked there. That's where One Barrel is, and then that smaller pharmacy. So those, those have worked. But yes, you're right. I think you're talking about the live apartments that the bottom was expected to be kind of a live-work type arrangement. And I'm not sure that really ever came to fruition.
And one of the things Code Next did, a lot of cities in the past 10 to 20 years would require somebody to build like a whole floor of commercial, and then build residential above. And any one of those developers will tell you that that won't work. And what they basically do is let the residential above subsidize the empty commercial spaces. And that's just how they survive. So what Code Next did was, instead of saying, you have to build an entire first floor of commercial, we just say, your residential has to be on the second floors and above. But if you want your common areas and everything on the first floor, that's okay. You do have to have a mixed-use component, and so maybe that's a very small coffee shop, or a public coworking station. We, we don't tell you what it has to be, just that you have to have some semblance of mixed use. But we're not telling you, you have to build an entire floor of it. So we're really kind of backing away from forcing that kind of development, because we can see what happens, I'm trying to remember what direction I'm pointing here. We can see what happens when it doesn't work, is we just end up with a lot of vacant spaces. And, and I've heard from developers in other parts of the country that have said, don't make us do that. We're just going to subsidize it, and we'll build more units, and then this will just stay empty. And it won't get used until everything around us completely develops, and then maybe we'll have some tenants in there. So I, I think there's places where it'll work, we just have to make sure it's done right.
Aaron? Yeah, I want to talk for a couple of minutes about the play indicator. There's only two metrics there, and they're both have to do with distance to parks. I think I brought this up in the last study session that we have. I think we have a unique opportunity. There's some, there's lots of studies coming out recently. I've been hearing lots of news, or seeing news articles and studies coming out around just how divided and disconnected we are as, as a, as a society. I think that under that play, we could talk also, not just about parks, but about third spaces. You know, you've got your first space, which is home, your second space, which is work, and then third spaces are where those connections between people happen. Traditionally, it's been things like churches, or bowling leagues, or, you know, you know, lots of different things. There's nothing on here about access to joining a sports league, or availability of coffee shops. I mean, you walk in, what is it, a mango tree, you know, and there's people just in there connecting. Public libraries, you know, all of these other amenities that can be supported by the city under perhaps this play indicator, but really getting at that dearth of opportunities for connection among people anymore, which I think regardless of how you sit politically, everybody wants more of that, and feels like more of that would be an answer to some of the division that we have. So I just think there's a real opportunity to, I mean, this obviously was one that's just kind of, okay, well, distance from parks, that's a metric we can pull out. I think there's opportunity to really flesh that out, and could be a really compelling component of the comp plan without making major changes, or, you know, just some acknowledgement of where we're at and what opportunity we have to improve the experience for, for the city.
I really like that. That's broadening that topic to make it a little more, I can't find the word, but.
Make it connections, or inclusivity.
Make it bigger than, than just.
Make it comprehensive.
Yeah. And, yeah, just make that more vibrant. There's other aspects of that that were, that just park no space is missing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, I, I don't know, and then just thinking out loud, or maybe its own indicator group called Connect. Like, how do our citizens connect with each other, or with the, you know, I'm just thinking.
I know we're not trying to do a major update, and we're trying to fit within, you know, a light update here, but perhaps that's a place where something like that could live, and really, you know.
Yeah, we, you know, especially, you know, when we do these neighborhood assessments, when we get into that part, that's something, you know, maybe I can, we can identify those types of third spaces that we do have, or we don't have in those areas. And, and maybe that can be a policy that we, or we're trying to attract another third space to that neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm trying to think right now, and maybe I'm just not informed on this because I haven't looked, but like, where would I take a painting class, or somebody take a dance class, or, you know, like, how accessible are those types of connection opportunities to, to the citizens?
Changing topics, but could you talk a little bit about what the plan improvements are along South Broadway, south of Hampton? It's a little bit vague right now. I'm just curious to hear a bit more detail about what those improvements are.
Yes. So I believe that they want to, they're looking to widen sidewalks. They also are looking to improve some of the different infrastructures, such as, I think, bus shelters as well. And there's even some pretty funky designs in it. There's, they want to, it's highly decorative. I've seen, I saw some sketches of that, and there's, they want to really make it colorful. So there, there could be a lot of painting of concrete.
Are all those lots kind of building on that, all the car lots that are there, are those all conditional use permits for those, or are those used by right along that corridor? I thought they were conditional use for some reason.
There, there are a lot of conditions that we do place on them, yes. That if you want to do a car lot, you, there are landscaping, I believe, conditions that we make you do, and.
Does that apply to, does it apply to existing car lots that are all just paved with fences right up to the sidewalk?
That's, I mean, is there an opportunity there, like, can we change those conditional uses or something like that, to kind of make that a more conducive area for where people want to be, as opposed to just use car lots for?
A good contextual example is like right across from the Gothic, like, what a wasted opportunity. It's like a giant parking lot with a fence. Like, talk about an ability to have a spot that could be conducive for community gathering, right across from a historic theater, and it's a car lot. Like, not, not that that's planning's fault, but like, there's got to be ways to start encouraging actually good community development as opposed to more car lots.
That's a very good comment. Thank you for that. We are, Dan Perenbo, which is the Chief Redevelopment Officer, and I are, in anticipation of the desires for affordable housing, are, have been undertaking an inventory of potential sites. And there, we are looking at, investigating car lot sites, yes. So, yeah, that is kind of on our radar.
Yeah, I mean, especially now, because you can find all these cars available for sale online. Like, most people aren't driving to a million car lots that have fifteen to thirty cars on there. They're finding them online and then realizing where it is. So I would think from a business perspective, most of those businesses aren't going to fall apart if they're off Broadway, but the community would probably benefit significantly to get rid of those.
Yeah. So I have, I, there has been a decrease, actually, over time in those. They're, they're, they are feeling more pressure, because there's different opportunities, and also cars just are lasting longer. People don't need to buy these cars as much. There's also a move to move operations off of a corridor like Broadway as well. We've seen some of these things pop up in industrial areas as well. But the, but economics, interestingly, says that it's very lucrative to lease a vacant site to a car lot operator. You don't put any money into the property at all, and, and it actually makes quite a bit of money for the owner. So there, those economics are still there.
And the question got related to, I guess, maybe both of those. Are there other opportunities? We, we talked about there not being a lot of opportunities for additional parks, but, you know, as some of these areas are turning overhands, or some of the industrial areas that maybe have been sitting empty, are there spots that the city is looking at to potentially acquire some additional open space land that, that could be turned into either active or passive parks?
You know, historically, the Parks Department has not been very active in that area. And I think it has a lot to do with how expensive it is to acquire the properties, and they just don't have that kind of budget. They rely very heavily on grants to, and there's a lot of park space that they already have that, that haven't even been improved. That are, you know, there, there are some parks that are just, you know, they're just an empty space with grass. So they haven't even been able to really necessarily improve all of their stuff that they have. Now, this park bond thing will, is going to be interesting. I, I, one of the things, some of the parks are areas that are underserved. One of the areas include, is this area south of two eighty-five, south of city center. There is this place called Miller Field there. But, you know, there's some interest, I've always looked at that and thought, well, there's some areas of this that aren't really being used for anything other than grass. And could they put a playground in there, you know? And, but they, but they are, they have, that is on the list of projects. They, they, they are looking at something like that and thinking, well, how can we better utilize that? And so there, there is a plan in the bond for Miller Field. And another opportunity, I think, is, is like the Little Dry Creek open space. There's lots of grass there, there's not much in there. And, you know, and that's really close to a lot of population density, and you already own it. So, you know, there's opportunities there, too.
Or just the extent of the trail, as you had alluded to with the redevelopment area. So, yeah, there's definitely some. And as our code requires that when a new, like apartment complex comes in, it requires them to dedicate property to a park, or pay a fee in lieu. Everybody pays the fee in lieu. They don't dedicate the park land. So it just gets, it's money that goes to the parks to, to work on the parks, but not to develop a new one necessarily.
And I, I think sometimes we've maybe even asked for additional fees or things. Is that the right number? Or if everyone's paying into it, are we asking for the right number? Maybe is that, is that a question we could look at also?
That would be a question for the Parks Department to look at, not us. But we, I, I don't know if they have a master plan update that will look at that going on anytime soon, but that would be in their direction.
Hold on, no, no, here.
Yeah. First of all, let me just say, Denny Miller Field, my daughter's softball team played there with Pirate Youth Sports. And, like, it's quite frankly embarrassing to have other teams come to that field. There's no cover, the fences are falling down, the, it, I mean, it was rough to go to the other places that we played softball, and then to bring those teams to Denny Miller Field. So hopefully it gets a lot better. I want to talk, like, big picture about all of this. So I'm a big, like, data and process improvement person. And I'm, I'm challenged with, like, calling what we're looking at here indicators, because we don't have any kind of sort of measurable success metrics here. So, you know, when we talked about the live indicators, a couple of the commission members, you know, said, I feel like we're doing the right things. I don't want to make any big changes. If we don't make any big changes, which I, I don't necessarily disagree with, how will we know two years, three years, five years from now, whether what we're doing is working? Whether we need to make big changes? You know, I think what I would really like to see across a lot of these indicators is, you know, if we do X strategy, we expect that, you know, rents in Inglewood will grow twenty percent more slowly than the region. Or we will build X new number of units, or, you know, that like, something that is a measurable goal, that we're not just watching the data change, but we're actually setting targets and saying, if we're doing the right things, this is what we expect to see. And I think we don't have that here. We have, you know, this data that goes back a few years, but we don't have that story of like, we looked at the data, we wanted to make this change, we implemented this policy, and then we can look and see whether that policy had an impact in one direction or the other. We, we just have the data. So I really, I understand that we don't want to change the goals, but I think they could really use some supplementing with that kind of target success metric for, you know, if we proceed with these strategies, this is what we expect the change to look like. I think that's also really important, because it goes to like what you were saying before about, people have different opinions about what the right direction to move is. And if we're just watching the data, then we're not really making a decision about which policy we collectively as a city think is the right way to go. We're just letting it happen. And I think that there's value in saying, like, no, we actually think that this particular approach is going to move us in the right direction, and I don't kind of see us doing that. One that I feel strongly about, I'm a, I'm a biker. I, like you, have, you know, I probably haven't ridden every street in Inglewood, but I've ridden a lot of them. I'd love to see, like, miles of bike lane, right, as a metric that we could actually track, you know? And sharos don't count, because they don't do anything. You know, things like that. And I, I, you know, I think there's a lot of, of these that would, would benefit from that kind of direction. So that's kind of what I would like to see when we do this supplement to the plan.
Thank you.
That's good. Might disagree a little bit with Sharos, but I understand what you're saying.
There, there's data. They don't work.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions, discussion?
I just have one very simple question, and maybe you don't know the answer. That asphalt Cushing Park that's right there along Floyd?
Oh, in the Cushing Park neighborhood? Yeah.
It's painted asphalt?
Yeah, yeah.
Is the new bond going to make that a little bit nicer? Because that's kind of a waste of space, in my opinion, the way it is.
Um, I'm, I have not. I have not looked, I, I'm not, I have not studied that park bond in super detail.
Okay.
I was very interested in what was going on in Miller Field for different reasons.
Oh, yeah, Miller Field definitely is.
And so I do not, I'm kind of guessing that that's not on parks, parks radar. It's really kind of this leftover piece of land that really is hard to develop, and so it's just, the city is just has it. Um, and those, the neighborhood wanted to do something about it, so they gave them, I think, a grant.
Some paint, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, well, I mean, and that's fair enough. I mean, it is a little itty bitty, like I said, this is a very tiny question.
It could be.
Piece of land. But if you just put some trees and some benches, that'd be a heck of a lot better than painted asphalt that now looks really bad. I just, that's an itty bitty question in terms of this.
So I, I will say that the, um, the DDA, uh, is very interested in a, a Little Dry Creek corridor, uh, that doesn't really exist today because it goes under a tun- into a tunnel and comes out, uh, north of the RTD parking lot. But they would, but we've also learned a lot about flooding potential as well, that there might be more flooding potential than we previously believed. And so there is this idea to try to potentially, and this is gonna be a long time coming 'cause it's gonna be a big expensive thing, but that is to how can we develop a, a more resilient corridor, uh, through that area? And that would, that piece of property might come into play as something important, as something that you could utilize to your advantage in that design.
Okay, well, like I said, this is an itty bitty question, but it's, in my opinion, it's becoming an eyesore 'cause there's, there's weeds coming up through the asphalt and all sorts of stuff, but anyway.
Sure. Um, I would also have to say to that, that, um, we've heard over and over for, since the dawn of time that, um, you know, parks is always crying poor. We don't have enough money to maintain what we have today, and so they will whine about that.
That was a neighborhood effort, by the way. Like, the neighborhood organizations get together, so don't let them, don't let them hear you say that. The feelings hurt.
No, I, I think the intent was good. The intent was trying to make it a little bit better, and, and that, and it is, I guess, a little bit better, but.
I heard they got, they raised some more money or something. They've got another grant. I think they're gonna keep going.
It would be a prime, maybe a good use would be if somebody wanted to put some sort of a memorial or something, I don't know, but just to think out of the box on it, but yeah, so. Very small.
Okay. Uh, not hearing anything else? Thank you.
Let, let me, uh, mention one thing, that Little Dry Creek, the, uh, where it goes under Big Lots and under Hobby Lobby, just leave that, uh, channel in there and then move the creek out to the, uh, street. You, you don't have to tear out the, um, where the, uh, channel is under the buildings, but I, I do know that, I heard the, uh, developer that wants to do the, uh, Hobby Lobby one, and he said his, his main concern about developing there is the, um, channel that he cannot build on. And he, if we took that out of there, and then he can do whatever he wants there. Put a hotel in and apartments, whatever he wants. You know, just run, run it down, uh, the street, Cherokee, what is it, Cherokee there? And then go down to Floyd, and then go down Floyd. And the, the walkability would skyrocket. That would really bring the walkability out of the stagnant area.
And it would reduce the flood risk to have an open channel through there. Uh, I think there's a lot of challenges, but I know it's something they're looking into, and hopefully there's some sort of process that happens that would allow that to happen. I know there's challenges. The developer says they can't do anything with it. Um, I find that hard to believe. I think the amenity would, would be a benefit too, but I, I'm not developing land, so I don't know.
What I would say is that's likely gonna be an upcoming public hearing, and hold all of your comments until the public hearing.
Perfect. Okay. Anything else, um, on the topics? Okay. Um, thank you very much, John. Really appreciate the information, and, uh, yeah, go from there. Uh, staff's choice, or should I, can I go to nomination of Mr. Rensen?
Yeah, you can do the motion to move him.
Okay. Um, so, uh, Camille Keys has relocated, so she's no longer gonna be a commission member, so I'd like to have a motion to nominate, uh, Mr. David Rensen to a full-time member from, conditional member? I forget what the term is right now. Alternate member, thank you, 'cause it's late. Uh, so I'll need a motion, and then.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. Then we can vote?
Do, is there any discussion or?
Oh, any dis- any discussion, uh, David, cover yours. Any discussion? Nope.
All right. Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Montiel?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Kaplan?
Yes.
Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Rensen?
Can I vote for myself?
You can.
Yes.
Thank you. And Chair Hagerty.
We should've started with him to make sure he voted for himself, but yes.
And Chair Hagerty.
And yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Great. Congratulations. Uh, actually, you've been a great addition to the, to the commission. Appreciate your, your service. So, uh, with that, staff's choice?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, John, it's all good? Good. Answer good, all right. Attorney's choice, true?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okey dokey. And Commissioner's choice, I'll come down the line, Carl? Commissioner's choice?
Nothing here.
Thank you. Michelle?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right. Erin?
Nope, nothing, thanks.
Eric?
Nothing further.
Thank you. No?
Um, I wanna quickly apologize for being absent the last few times. I was, uh, in, uh, in doing the Dr. Cog Civic Academy, which also happened to be on Tuesday evenings. Um, it's a really good program, and I will make sure to, uh, point out when I see that it comes back around again, if anybody, uh, um, isn't aware, it's a, um, just sort of a program to learn about what Dr. Cog does and to learn about different approaches to a lot of the issues that we talked about tonight and that we regularly talk about as, you know, in the regional approach, um, that Dr. Cog takes. Um, and then one of the things that you do is develop an action project, um, and mine was to launch a new community organization called Vibrant Inglewood. Um, and, um, you can kind of check out what that organization is about at vibrantanglewood.org. Uh, and we have an email list and an Instagram right now, um, and starting to, uh, gather people, trying to create some of that third space. We've been meeting at, uh, the Feederi Grow and Gather, which is a wonderful, uh, third space for that kind of community meeting. Um, and, uh, yeah, so that's, uh, doing that Civic Academy program prompted me to start that group and, and, you know, work outside of, of, uh, the direct sort of city involvement with trying to improve our community. So, thank you guys for, uh, you know, tolerating my absence.
I think for that, that seems to be well worth it, but welcome back and love to hear more as you progress with it. And you?
Nothing for me.
Awesome. Well, that's, uh, I'm good as well, so thank you, everyone. Uh, thank you for the open house. It was wonderful to have, uh, a few people come and join us, so with that, me and John, thank you.